I'm going to call to the Southborough School Committee Special Open Meeting for Wednesday, March 2, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is audience sharing. I just want to let folks know that we're going to run a pretty strict time limit tonight because we don't have a lot of time. And we have received a number of emails. They've been very helpful. And I think I've mentioned before, the best way to get information to the committee because all the committee members do receive emails. We make sure of that. And best in best way to get information to the committee is to send an email. It actually gives us a little time to, you know, consider what was actually presented in the email as opposed to something that might be presented half an hour or 15 minutes or five minutes before discussion. So I'm looking and I do not see any hands up. So why don't we move forward to the agenda? I will say this before I turn it over to the superintendent, just adding to what I said before about a number of emails. We have had emails from a number of folks that frankly wish masks had come off a couple of days ago, or I should say really the choice had been enabled a couple of days ago to folks that, you know, wish they'd stay on for another for another week and a half, or sometimes even to the end of the school year. So we've had a lot of information. We've, we've looked at information and I'll turn it over to the superintendent. Maybe asking him to just give a little summary on kind of why we're having a meeting tonight. And then go from there.
Sure. So thank you, Roger. And so, good evening. And this is a special meeting really for a single purpose to talk about lifting the masking requirement. It's been a little under two weeks since there was a special meeting with the Northborough School Committee and the Southborough School Committee to discuss masking. And at that time, the school committee voted to lift the masking requirement beginning March 14, 2022. Two weeks is a long time in the world of a pandemic and we have some new data and new information. And we've done some additional thinking. The Northborough School Committee regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled at 6:30 this evening. And the Northborough Committee will also be taking up lifting of the masking requirement and voting on the topic. I will share that on February 28, the students at the middle schools and high schools returned with masking as a choice. From all indications of the principals, it's been a good first few days. About one out of every three student is wearing a mask. So a little probably around between 30 and 35% of students are masking. And from all accounts, students have been very respectful respectful of each other in terms of the choices that they're making, whether to mask or not to mask. The other kind of anecdotal information that Mr. Hershak presented to us was the fact that they're seeing a lot of students making choices around when to mask. So a lot of nuanced masking. So really making decisions around, okay, I'm in, you know, a space with more students. Students will then put on a mask. And if they're able to, you know, they're in a room with good ventilation. Some students are choosing not to mask. So students are being nuanced in their choices. So overall, it's gone very well. I think that the reason why, you know, calling a special meeting this evening is for two reasons. One, I think that two weeks is a long time in a pandemic. And the CDC has released some new guidelines. And I understand that we haven't followed any one particular guideline solely throughout the pandemic. But this is the first time where CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Department of Public Health has been aligned in its recommendation. We also have some data presented that we will present to you this evening around what we're seeing in terms of number of cases in our, in our system, in our Southborough system, as well as our community, which I think is very compelling. So this evening really is an opportunity to hear the data and then have a conversation around, you know, should masking be lifted sooner? And as I indicated to the community, my recommendation is to lift the mask requirement starting tomorrow, March 3. That recommendation, there's consensus with the medical advisory team, have also had conversations with association president. And they are, they continue to be in alignment with, with the recommendation. So at this point in time, I'm going to have Mary Ellen send the data and answer any questions. We also have Dr. Medina here to answer any questions of the committee. And at that point, we'll turn it back over to the chair for discussion. So I'm going to share my screen and Mary Ellen will begin her presentation.
Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Martino said, the CDC came out with new recommendations on February 25. An active February 25, the same day they came out with the recommendations, they became active. And what those recommendations were depended on the risk of your community. And they changed prior to this data point, the data points that they had to for identifying the risk of a community, their risks before about community transmission levels. Our communities would never have met the low to moderate risk factor. So with this new data that is much more reasonable and much more attainable for community, that's just important to keep in mind here. So what the CDC recommended, that is if your community was identified as a low risk, you would wear a mask based on personal preference. So it would be, you would decide by your risk level, it's optional masking really is what if you're in a low risk. If you're in a medium risk area that you, and if you're immunocompromised or high risk for severe illness, you would take the recommendations of your healthcare provider and wear masks when you're indoors, which is a recommendation from the Department of Public Health, right, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health right now is if you are immunocompromised, you should mask when you're indoors. Or if you live with someone who's immunocompromised, if you're in a medium risk area, you should mask when you're indoors. And then if you're in high risk, it, you should wear a mask when indoors is basically what it comes down to. So Greg, can you go to the next slide, please? So the way that, that this risk factor of your community level is figured out is using the number of cases per 100,000 people in the past seven days. So just to give you an estimate, in the past seven days in Northborough, there were eight cases and in Southborough, there were 14, I believe. So it was 14.8 per 100,000 in Southborough and 8.4 per 100,000 in Northborough. So we are to figure out that was per day. So multiply those by seven and we're still much lower than the 200. So we were in the fewer than 200 category of new COVID cases. And then they would look at the hospitalizations, new admissions and inpatient beds that are taken up by COVID-19 patients. Could you go to the next slide, please, Greg? So this is Massachusetts. This is what we look like with the CDC sent out their information on February 25. We border Worcester County and Middlesex County, almost right where that black line is, Northborough and Southborough is. So we are in the moderate risk. So that would be mean that we recommend that immunocompromised people wear a mask while indoors, or if you had someone that at home that's immunocompromised or high risk, then you would wear a mask when indoors. Could go to the next slide, please. So this is the data from up to February, the week of February 24. And what the cases in Worcester County were 14 per 100,000. Then the next slide, please. And then the hospitalizations in Worcester, hospitalized COVID patients were 40, which is eight per 100,000 residents. So I'm assuming by this data that when the CDC comes out with a new, usually theirs is every two weeks. So it takes two weeks worth of time to for you to get updated. We will see that Worcester County will most likely move into a low risk if things keep trending the way they are. All right, Greg, you could go to the next slide, please. So these are the number of cases in our towns, per what the daily average daily cases per 100,000 in our towns. And this is from September 5 until right now. And you can see that Northborough is below the 10 per 100,000. And Southborough, I think, is just above the 10 per 100,000 for this past week. I've note Southborough has had a cluster of cases in one of our boarding schools. So that might account for an increase in the numbers in Southborough in the past two weeks. And then in our school system, you can see our numbers have dropped off their steady from last week over vacation to this week. We've had eight cases in both weeks. Southborough is the yellow. We had seven cases over vacation that we were notified of and four cases this week that we were notified of. And then our year-to-date positive tests, it mirrors, as we've said, everything that you look at this, that school, the town, the county, the state that would all similarly, the graph would look the same. And then our vaccination rates are an important factor when we're looking at it. And this is the updated information as of today. As you can see, that Trotter, Woodward and Finn K and 1 are all above 80%. And Neri is right coast there on the tails with 76.54%. Of the preschool, 38% of the eligible students in preschool are vaccinated. So when we talk about vaccine, we've heard in the news, recent studies that have come out about the vaccine effectiveness and the five to 11 year olds. So there were two studies. There was what, this is one from the CDC that was released right after the one from New York State. So we're going to talk about this one first, and then we'll go to the other one that has gotten a lot of, a lot of press coverage lately. So the vaccine effectiveness during Omicron, and this, the CDC study just did urgent care and emergency visits. They did not do case count. So during Omicron, which was just December to January, really mid-December through January, in age five to 11, it was 51% effective in preventing urgent care or emergency room visits. And prior to that, when it was Delta and Omicron periods, which was prior to mid-December, the vaccine was 74% effective for our five to 11 year olds. I think that's where we're focusing here with this discussion. So you can look at the others if you wish, but it's a, the 74% and the 51% is what we're looking at right now. And this is in preventing urgent care and emergency room visits, not in preventing disease. So we can go to the next slide. This is a study that has received a lot of press lately. This was not a peer reviewed study. It had a very small case, positive cases that were a part of the study. So it raises great questions. But it also, we need to look at what data was presented in the study. So the great, great questions are coming from the study about the effectiveness of the vaccine. But the case, the sampling of the cases was very small. So in this one, during, this is kind of opposite of what we just presented in the opposite during Delta, which was prior to mid-December, it, the vaccine was 100% effective in preventing hospitalization. And then during the Omicron period, those numbers fell and it was to 48% effective in preventing hospitalization. So I think that's really what our goal is, is to prevent the hospitalization of severe disease. So when we remember about optional masking, when we're doing it, I think there's some important things that we need to keep in mind. And that there are times when masks will be required. So I know that the teachers have been working this week. People have sent me their PowerPoints that they've shared with their classrooms about the discussions they've had with their students. But masks are a choice. So some people will choose to wear them and some people have to wear them. They have to be worn in the health office by everybody that steps into the health office. And they have to be worn on day six to 10, when an individual is returning from a shortened five-day isolation or quarantine. And then there are also times when masks will be recommended. And so masks are recommended for unvaccinated individuals. They're recommended for immunocompromised individuals. They're recommended for vaccinated close contacts for 10 days after exposure to an individual who was positive for COVID-19. And they're recommended for individuals who have symptoms and have tested negative until their symptoms resolve. And then the, some other reminders that I'm going to take this opportunity to say is that it's really important that as we've talked about, as we begin to lift some mitigation, that we're really diligent about the things that we have personal control over those things. You know, like the school is taking care of the air quality and the HEPA filters and testing the CO2 and making sure we have hand sanitizer and soap. And, you know, and reminding everybody about hand hygiene and personal space and cough etiquette and all of those things. But there are personal responsibilities that every individual that steps foot into the school has, and that is to monitor for symptoms. Not sure if we need to go over the symptoms, but the symptom lists are everywhere. There are individual symptoms like a fever, loss of taste or smell, cough, and that singularly, those symptoms warrant a test. And then there are symptoms that are in combination with other symptoms, like a headache or gastrointestinal symptoms, sore throat, that need to be in combination to warrant testing. When we think about the symptoms, we need to think about our risk factor too. You know, were we exposed to anybody? Did we have any high risk exposures? When we think about, do we need to test? So, and so if anybody is symptomatic, we ask you to please stay home and call the nurse. She will give you, or they will give you the advice that you need about testing and about returning to school. And depending on your symptoms, PCR testing may be recommended, not just an antigen test. We also continue to encourage participation in weekly pooled screening on Mondays and weekly antigen testing on Thursdays. This is going to give us some great data if we need it. This past week, we had 1,300 people participate on Monday in our pooled screening and we had one positive test, which is the least amount we've had all year long. So that's great news. The least amount of positive tests, not the least amount of participation, but the least amount of positive tests we had all year. So I think that when we're thinking about, is it time to remove masks? I think if it's reasonable to say yes, the medical advisory team has discussed this. As you know, we met prior and we made our recommendation before the, the meeting on the 17th. And since then, like Mr. Martino said, two weeks is a long time. The data has shown in the past two weeks, there's been eight cases each week, which is a lot less than it was before we met on that Thursday. So I think that we need to, we know that the CDC has now come up with reasonable data points and criteria when labeling the risk of a community. And we need to keep that in mind because we do have the ability to go back to masking if we need it. So if we, you know, both ways, the data would be the data points that we use to remove masks are reasonable and to go back on reasonable. So we are open to any questions. Dr. Medina is here to help answer them also.
Returning us over for committee questions. Okay, Jen, I see your hand up.
I have a question. So thank you that that extra data is helpful. I just wanted to raise the issue. I guess the last time that we met and we were considering this topic, the rationale that we were given for why we, why it was being recommended for the two weeks included, I believe it was twofold. In part was to give teachers and the school and families time to prepare and to address kind of those emotional concerns that might come up with seeing different masking. And then the second part was to be able to gather some data based on what had happened after we removed the mandate for the older kids. And I guess, you know, my question is then if that was the original, I guess rationale for us voting on extending it, that two-week period, what has changed? And that wasn't based on kind of infection rates necessarily. It was based on these other two pieces. And so I'm, I would like to know what has changed with respect to those two components that makes it seem that we should, we should get, you know, change that to earlier, whether or not we have data from teachers or families or anything like that, that would be helpful.
So I can take the first question around, you know, what has changed since the committee last voted on February 17? I think after some discussions with educators, meeting with a leadership team, and one of the things that is was clear is that we don't need two weeks to prepare students. Our students can have been adjust, you know, adjusting and flexible and adaptable throughout this pandemic. And we did, you know, ask teachers to start prepping. So even, even if, you know, the vote this evening is to keep the 14th, you know, continuing to have those conversations around, you know, making choices and respecting choices. But we feel our students are more than capable of kind of respecting choice and, and working around either masking or not masking depend, depending on a family's decision. So that's one thing that's changed. In terms of, another thing that's changed is we do have data. You know, we have two weeks of data. And one of the things that we did talk about, Jen, was, you know, we'd have better data after, you know, after March 14. But I also think that over the past two weeks, we've seen a continued downward decrease in COVID-19 cases. We did not see, we have not seen the spike that we saw pre-December break, December break, and after December break. It's, it's a very different environment. And then Dr. Medina, I'll turn it over to you to answer any of the other remaining questions or add to my responses.
I think, you know, I think our biggest, you know, reassurance, looking back, I mean, you know, community rates, while they didn't play a role in the initial decision, we didn't know how rapidly these rates would fall. And it sounds like especially looking at the Southborough data for the past seven days has provided that extra layer of reassurance that in fact, we have not seen a surge over the past week and a half in, in our town. And our town generally reflects our school, especially as Mary Ellen said, you know, a lot of those cases may have been linked to a cluster that wasn't related directly to our school community. So as we look at that factor, and I think the third factor is, you know, with the transportation requirement being lifted, I think, you know, one of the other thoughts we had was, you know, how confusing is it to take a, put a mask on a bus, take it off? And then, you know, I think that layer also for our children has been removed. I hope that answers that, that question, Jen.
I think I can add a little bit more, Jen. I think when we think about all of this together, you know, throughout the whole pandemic, we've had to shift and be fluid with our decisions that we make using the information that we have. And so this, when the CDC came out with this recommendation that masks were not required in, you know, areas that are low to moderate risk and K to 12 schools and the buses, they aligned, like Mr. Martino said, with the DPH and DESI, really for the first time in a long time, all of their recommendations aligned together. So we needed to take that into consideration too, when we made our decision. The medical advisory team, we talked about it. There's people who thought that it's fine to, most, I would say the majority, definitely the majority of people thought that was great. March 3 was a date that was, okay, it wouldn't make a difference. None of the data would make a difference whether we went in the 3rd, the 7th, or the 14th. It really wouldn't make a difference. What the, one of the, some of the things that were said when we, I sent out the survey to the medical advisory team was that it, the benefit of masking the students for the school day does not match the, what's happening outside of the school day, right? So if we kept them masked, it really would provide no benefit at all compared to the amount of time that they're unmasked and in different public places, different public arenas. The study that just came out, we met yesterday, the medical advisory team. And of course, we, I sent out the survey prior to that study coming out and being made public. And then we met yesterday, I said, does that change your thoughts? Does that change your opinion that the 3rd is okay? And everybody said no. What, what changed was before, before we knew about the vaccine, the question of the vaccine efficacy, probably 20 cases per 100,000 would have been our cutoff for being okay for masks. And now it's probably more between the five to 10 or 15 is where some people would feel comfortable with unmasking, which is where we are.
That's taking into consideration the new study that came out to reduce those rates. Can I just follow up with the point, you know, so in terms of the data that we have now, the new data in the past week and a half, you know, but students haven't been without masks for more than three, two, three days. So we don't necessarily know, right? Assuming that symptoms might show, or a positive test might show up, oh, you know, several days in, the current data that we have is still really retrospective to the vacation, right? We might not be seeing a spike yet.
Correct. That's absolutely correct. We will probably would not see it with Omicron, usually three to five days is when people are, you know, converting to positive. So we probably would see, maybe start to see things if people are doing the antigen test on Thursday or probably next Monday. That's why really upping our testing is going to help us to know what's really going on. So that up and that participation in testing is really going to be a great data point. And we have the ability to resume masking, although it would be really a downer for sure for everybody if we took them off. And then in two weeks, we saw our case rate skyrocket. But what we're seeing in the trends is we're not seeing that there are schools that have had them off already optional masking. Westborough has done it prior to February break, and they did not see an increase in cases.
And I, and just finally, my last point, can we get information as we get this data in, especially, I mean, the community and the committee too, to, once we've had a little bit more time to see in terms of what's happening after this, this break?
I think, I think the great place to go would be the dashboard. There's a daily update there and the weekly updates which show the case counts. That's done on Wednesday afternoon or Thursday mornings. It's updated right now as of today. It was updated this afternoon, but the daily case, case counts are on that every day. And that's a way to monitor really what's going on in your school. You know, that was kind of a thing that we implemented when we stopped contact tracing. So people would know really what's going on in their classroom. It's by classroom in the elementary school. So I think that that will be a place where people can look until we meet again and make a, unless great, maybe Mr. Martino will, will include all that data in his Friday newsletters too.
And I guess that's what I think would be helpful, both for committee, is instead of having to go in and individually look up the dashboard, if we can have some kind of report or reassurance, particularly for those families who feel pretty anxious about masks going away. Thank you.
We could accommodate that.
But I think someone was, oh, it was, it was Mr. Martino said that he started a study about really what is the effectiveness of one person masking if other people are not? And it's really a well-fitted mask is really your best defense. And I'd said, you know, like from the beginning of Saftar's career, my career, respiratory precautions were a surgical mask. So a well-fitted surgical mask. So it's really not, and all of this that we've done really isn't anything new when we're talking about precautions. So I think it's just moved from the medical setting to the, to the public. So I think that that's really what the people can have a well-fitted mask, double mask. Those are the things that they can, you know, do for themselves, wash their hands, keep their hands away from their face, all of those typical infection control things.
Thank you.
Greg, did you want to add something to Mary Ellen's response before I move on to more questions?
No, I just, I'll make a quick comment, but I obviously want to give people time to talk. I think one of the comments that was made on one of, I believe it was from the CDC and I, was the fact that, you know, when case rates are low, we need to seize the opportunity to be able to kind of lift masking. And there's always going to be this, this line when, and there's no perfect answer. But I do think that, I think we need to seize the opportunity because we don't know what the future is going to hold. We don't know. We don't know if there's another variant on the horizon, although we hope not. And we may have to act the policy and put on masks again as a result. So I do feel like if we can seize this opportunity and, you know, provide at least as much time as we can without masking, I think it is in the best interest of students.
Kamali.
I would add a question for Safdar and Mary Ellen. For the page on the report that talks about vaccine effectiveness. It was speaking to just emergency room and urgent care visits. Could you help us, you know, understand your logic or how you feel comfortable in that level of reporting? Whereas some people just went to the doctor or the regular, like for those that didn't go there to the ER or the urgent care. That metrics isn't available. So could you just help us go reassure that why you chose this tool to look at?
I chose this tool because they were the two studies that just recently came out, the one from New York State and the one from the CDC. I think urgent care probably includes your doctor's office. It's not just like the minute clinic that you go to. So our urgent care or ED visit includes your primary care physician visits would be an urgent care visit. Instead of a well visit, it would be considered an urgent care visit. So I think that this the data from New York didn't only took into account reporting cases. So that would be PCR cases, not people who did home antigen tests who didn't do it. So I'm thinking that's where some of the discrepancy in the effectiveness lies when they were comparing the two. So I think seventy four percent effectiveness in preventing hospitalizations is is what we're looking at. We're preventing severe illness. Is the number. And I think like that number is, I feel comfortable with that number. Safdar, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and I, you know, I think one of the the when you look at this, these numbers, when people present to urgent cares doctors, it may just be for a very, very mild single symptom to get tested for COVID nineteen and they'll be included in that report. So, you know, when I when I looked at all that data again carefully, even again today, that seventy four percent of preventing hospitalization, I think, is is the number that reassures us that that, you know, we have an effective vaccine and we have high vaccination rates in our communities to go along with that.
I mean, and if we look at our data in our community, we have a very small, like minute number of people who have been hospitalized.
And the other thing in that CDC study was I was shocked because this was done from around the country. The vaccination rates were actually quite low in those areas where they actually, you know, did those studies. When you actually look at the the raw data and the number of patients that were vaccinated versus unvaccinated in those studies compared to what we have. Which is extremely high.
And another follow up question is like just within the community input that we've received, whether we collectively or just me personally through conversations. There are physicians, whether they're MD or other letters after their name, but physicians in the community that feel strongly about not having the optional masking at this time. And and some that feel very adamant that we should start as soon as possible. Kind of can you talk a little bit about like where the MAT stands? Were you added like seventy thirty, you know, a hundred percent one way, fifty fifty one way?
It was a hundred percent of people were okay with removing masks on March third. Hundred percent of the medical advisory team. There were some that thought that maybe March seven, one, one, one person thought that maybe March seventh would be give families more time to prepare those families who were maybe a little bit more anxious about removing the masks. And personally, there was one person who thought that they were okay with waiting till March fourteenth, but they were a hundred percent of the people were oak of the on the medical advisory team were okay with lifting masks, the master primate as of March third.
I'm gonna pause there and Kim or Roger, if you want to continue.
Okay, Kim. Thank you, Kamali.
Um, I just have a couple. One, Mary Ellen, how many people are doing the antigen test right now? Like over the
I don't know. I only
I only I mean, I'm sorry, how many people are getting the antigen test?
Getting the antigen test. So about twelve hundred students and about six hundred, a little over six hundred staff.
Okay. And now that we've stopped contact tracing and we think this is an important mitigation, are we like looking at ways to increase that? Or do we need to increase that? I know there are a lot of people who have tested positive. So they're sort of out of that loop.
Correct. So I think that, I mean, the more people that are eligible to test the test, the better information we'll have. There are people who are against testing. There are people who are not eligible to test because they've tested positive in the past ninety days. So I think that we get daily, I get people signing up. So, you know, I think people are maybe we're going to see an uptick in testing. Now that the masks are potentially coming off.
Maybe that's something that we can look at at our like monthly meetings, like how many people like, you know, to sort of see the shift, like do we have less people testing? Do you have more people testing? Is that an easy number to pull?
I mean, for the for the pool testing, it's an easy number to pull, but I can only know how many antigen tests we give.
Right, 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 right. Yes, that's of course. Um, okay. And then my other question is for Greg. The recommendation is only around the dates, right? Like the the policy. Everybody's still comfortable with that ninety two percent being sort of the trigger number for the policy.
The policy's been voted in and stands. So today's discussion centers around and a vote around the the date when we start implementing policy.
Okay. Okay. And and as have you talked about it as the medical advisory team?
About whether the policy is
Whether that ninety two percent is sort of still
Yeah, I mean, I think that is. I mean, I think, you know, we discussed that that still is a metric that that works and it's again, kind of a trigger to convene the medical advisory team to work with our boards of health to investigate further what's happening and then to make a decision based on additional data. So I think it, I think it still stands. I think the medical advisor and Saftar, the medical advisory team still supports that policy. And it also provides an on ramp. So it provides an opportunity for us to require masking if that is necessary in the future.
Okay, great. Just to add on to that, the ninety two percent would trigger a recommendation from the medical advisor team.
Right.
When we start to see it fall, we would definitely be delving deeper into all of the data to see what's happening, you know.
Right before the ninety two percent. Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, great. That's it. Thank you.
Katara.
Okay, so I I had some of the same questions that Jenny Kim had, and those have been answered, but just one of the the question about the policy. So Mary Ellen, what was the thing you were saying about at one point, the the MAT was comfortable with a certain number of cases, but then with the vaccination study that got that came down. Can you just clarify that? Because that's what made me think about the policy and whether that threshold would need to be adjusted. But I I must not have understood what you were saying.
So it's the twenty cases per hundred thousand per day. So that that would be there. The threshold, that's what what we said, like twenty cases per hundred thousand per day, we would be okay with taking masks off. And then this week, when I asked again, you know, like after we had the new studies about the vaccine, the question of the vaccine efficacy, did people feel comfortable still with that? And people said like, maybe it would be five to ten or to fifteen per hundred thousand per day that would be a more of a comfort level for removing the masks. And we are right at those levels right now.
I see. And so either one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does that make sense?
It does make sense. That part makes sense. But how do those correlate to the ninety two percent attendance rate or do you know what I mean?
Yeah, those are two totally separate.
It would totally
Yeah, it would be case case counts, but we know that our case counts and our our attendance rates kind of correlate with each other, right? So our case counts now are eight. When our case counts were two hundred and forty six, our attendance rate was eighty eight percent. And now it's ninety five or ninety six percent, you know, so they do correlate with each other. Or slowly, you know, right, follow each other right afterwards.
Gotcha. Okay, so the case counts now correlate with a comfortable attendance level. So we're comfortable with the masks coming off. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Greg, did you have something else? Okay. So just a comment, I'd like to make a couple of comments. So the previous meeting, I I looked at five factors to try to help me determine what I thought was an appropriate way to vote. Five factors were obviously local health, the health data, the local health data, the metrics. The district recommendation, important. The the fact that the buses were still going to require masks, and I have another question about that. It's also important. These aren't in any particular order of priority. The medical advisory team recommendation is important. And also the teacher's support. So the first question is I know Dave isn't here tonight. Greg, do you have feedback on the teacher's support? Or did I miss that earlier? And I I already heard you comment on that.
Yeah, so Mr. Fenneran is in the audience, but I I think I did connect with David yesterday and and had a in-depth conversation and and he supports the medical advisor or the Teachers Association supports the medical advisory team's recommendation. So they have been consistent in their in in their response.
All right. The question I have about the masking on buses. If so currently the K through five students are masking on buses or not masking on buses, since that requirement was lifted at least by what's happening with the K through five on buses at the at the moment, last few days?
So they are ma- our policy states that they'll be masking on buses pre-K through five. So that is what is happening currently.
Okay, so we would effectively, we would, if we change the date or we change the date to to a date that parents would have choice before the fourteenth. Then that date will also change for busing. Is that
Correct.
Presumed? All right. Those are really my questions. Anybody have any follow on questions or follow on comments from the committee, Jen?
Uh, yeah, I just have a comment about the the specific date. So this would be effective as of tomorrow. Is do you all believe that that's sufficient time to inform the community? Or is there thought that maybe even giving one extra day for families to prepare is something that would be helpful? Because I assume if we vote to support the recommendation today, it would be effective as of tomorrow morning.
We can, we can, we can recommend whatever date we the it's, you know, it would be the will of the committee. Would it be tomorrow morning, Friday or Monday? So that's that's really our option in trying to think about what what we what we would actually decide. But are you you're asking that question, not of me. So who are you asking the question of? But as far as the sufficient time question?
So I can, I can respond, Jen. I think that you know, I did signal to the community Sunday, what my recommendation was going to be to the committee. Teachers have been having conversations with students throughout, you know, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. You know, I do have a communication drafted, you know, not because I was assuming what the committee would vote, but rather just to prepare. So I have a communication ready to go out to the community. And I think you know, I think I think we can expect that, you know, many students will come and mask tomorrow, even if the masking requirements lifted. And it I I don't think there's any perfect time.
Jen? Okay, your hand is still up. All right. Any other, any other follow on comments? I mean, I will admit that one of the things I had thought about at the first meeting was a one week instead of a two week, but you know, should have, would have, could have, doesn't get you much. So that's what I had thought back then. Kamali?
Um, just kind of a comment that like Roger, you alluded to earlier, the factors that you looked at two weeks ago and making that decision. And and the same is true for for me, that there is a multifaceted decision. And, you know, there may there, you know, if anyone thinks that these are kind of like predetermined, preconceived or collaborated prior to the the meetings in the evening, that that's not happening, right? So each of us are are coming to these conclusions in an independent way, you know, and in line with the the way that we're supposed to be working. And one of the things that I also considered, in addition to the list you mentioned, Roger, was the feedback that we received that shared that there are families that really have some complicated immunocompromised issues. They also have, if it's if it doesn't have to do with their health situation, they're dealing with just kind of like neurotypical or non-neurotypical learning. And so things like adjustments for their kids and their families are difficult and challenging. So that was another thing that I thought about and why the the date seemed to kind of marry up for for me then was because it allowed that transition. And I think the new information that we have today, right, is that the the every school except Mary having the high vaccine percentages. The the new recommendation from the MAT. And then I think Mary Ellen, you said it is that this is the first time in a long time, maybe since twenty twenty, where all of the institutions, governing bodies, the medical bodies kind of are lining up. Public health, the and Desi and CDC. And so that that's those are just kind of new information, because some people wondering like, oh, what are you learning new that's going to help you to make a decision tonight? So I just kind of put that out there. And then in the two weeks that we've had between prior discussion till tonight, we also had feedback. So that that feedback is 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 helpful as well. And kind of considering what it is that people wanted to share or, you know, since then. So I think that taking all of that into play to, you know, this evening will be you know, is what we're going to be needing to do. Yeah. So that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Katara, let me just make a quick comment. Follow on to my comment about the factors that I had considered myself before a decision last time. Those factors were all pointing at fourteen days. Now what's happened is all those factors allow for though that date to be moved up. So they're still all aligned in moving that date up. Anyway, go ahead, Katara. I'm sorry.
Oh, don't be sorry. Um, yeah, no, I was just going to say that I I think that I just wanted to make the comment that I I, you know, one of the the primary guiding, one of the primary guiding principles for me, and I think for others on the committee, as far as I've seen, it has been to follow the science and the experts and to listen to the public health advice that we've received. I mean, you know, it, this has all been a, a there's been a lot of information to consider, and we're not all experts in in this. And so we listen And so we listen to the experts. And what I know, one of the questions that I had asked in our last meeting was. You know, if we were going to vote to make masks optional, you know, the C D C at that point currently had a masking thing. You know, what were we thinking was going to happen with the C D C? And I, you know, I know that we, at that meeting, we were talking about how cases would continue to go down. And that the C D C was going to make some sort of revision. And so we were all, we were just sort of anticipating what was probably going to happen. But we didn't know exactly what was going to happen. And I think in the meantime, you know, we've seen everything that's developed has really moved toward this happening. That, you know, moving toward and, and to, as, as Greg pointed out, to take the opportunity when we can. I, you know, in all of the public health reasoning that I read throughout these last two years. I mean, it's really balancing public health with social, emotional health, with mental health. I mean, there, there's, there are all the other factors as well. And, and, you know, in my mind, and from what I've seen and heard, we're at a point in time where, you know, those other factors are, you know. As important as they ever were, but we're, we're at a place where we can really shift things to really tangibly take them into account. You know, as, as much as we can. So, so in any event, that's, that's sort of my take on what's happened in the last couple of weeks. And how we're, we are where we are right now.
Kamali, is your hands up again, or is it just still up from before? Okay, any more comments? All right, well, let's put a motion on the floor. Now, I think this is, would be a pretty, a pretty straightforward motion. It would simply be to move the, the date.
Roger?
Yes, Kamali?
All right, can I interrupt?
Sure, absolutely. Also, even you could have interrupted even after a motion, so please.
Just kind of wanted to hash something out here before you propose a motion or one of us proposed a motion. So back to Jen, your comment about the timing. If this evening, any, any changes evening being too soon to implement the following morning. So one thought about that is, you know, we have announced other types of changes in evenings. And had to adapt to following morning, usually weather related or, you know, close openings, closing delays, et cetera. So we could get the communication out there, that part, the logistical part is like, that's doable. But then the part about preparing students, families, et cetera, bus drivers. Is that, I think people have been talking about it. Like, it's not like, you know, I don't think that folks have not been talking about this for months. Or since in two weeks or over vacation. So I do think that any, any change could be implemented in short turnarounds. And so I just wanted to like.
Uh, no, I, well, I, I was going to say similar, I mean, I agree with, with Kamali. I mean, I think that this has been on everyone's mind. And I, you know, even if the date were to change to tomorrow. The previous date of the fourteenth was already out there. I think that those who are, you know, concerned about continuing to mask and all that. They likely have made sort of mental plans for how they're going to, you know, handle it once it happens. And I know that it's been thought through with the administration and buildings and how it's all going to be situated. I think as long as the, the principals and the people in the buildings are prepared for any sort of furniture changes or logistical. You know, I know there was going to be some adjustments that way, too. I don't know how, if they've had enough notice for all of that. But I, I really feel that this has been on everybody's mind. And they, they probably already have a plan for how they're going to approach it. That's, that's just my sense.
I do, I happen to agree with you. I mean, certainly one of the things that, that I've tried to weigh. Thinking about one direction or the other is the current direction of, at the moment. Masking, that's not a choice. That's basically a, a requirement. The other direction is really a choice. So, and that, that's something that I consider, you know, in thinking about the two directions. Other comments from the committee? All right, so back to trying to at least describe a, a motion without putting it on the floor. Because I, that's actually not for me to do. But I think the motion and would really simply be to recommend. To, to, to move that we move the date for masking choice. For the elementary students to whatever. Is that, is that pretty much a straightforward that, Greg? Okay.
Yes.
Well, I'll entertain a motion, but anybody like to put one on the floor? You're going to leave it to me? Maybe not.
My hand up, start talking if you want.
I didn't, I'm sorry?
No, I had my hand up, but I can just start talking if you want me to. Um.
Please.
I'll just, I'll, yeah, so I'll just make a motion that we amend the date of moving to optional masking. From March fourteenth to March third.
Does that receive a second?
I have an additional motion.
Well, I think that you, we need to second this motion to get it on the floor. And we can certainly make an amendment to a motion as, as part of the process before we vote on the, the motion that's on the floor. So. I will, I want to get this motion on the floor for discussion, so I'll second it. So it's been moved by Katara, seconded by Roger. That we amend the, the, the choice date, if you will, to the third from the fourteenth. Any discussion on this? Kamali, were you going to?
Um, yeah, so I'll, I'll, um, yeah, I, um. I think that a medium would be to start on Monday, that's the seventh. And that it's not, you know, it's not going to appease everybody. But for those that are ready to start their option right away. It brings them a little bit closer in to the time that they're hoping for. And for those that are looking to have that option start much like, you know, later. Or not start at all, we would give them a, a few days to prepare for that. As well as not the book teachers, the classrooms, the students and, and the busing. It's Wednesday, you know, night, Thursday morning, we could, you know, start. But I think that Monday would be a, a fresh way to start that. And that's my comment.
So there's an amendment to change the main motion from the third to the seventh. Does that receive a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen. Open for discussion on the amendment, which is for the seventh. Kim, I'm looking at the wrong place on the screen here, please, sorry.
Um, I just want, I'm wondering if softer or Mary Ellen can just speak to. Do you see any problems with moving it to the seventh?
I don't see any problems with moving it to the seventh unless Northborough votes it in for tomorrow.
And if they voted it in for tomorrow, what would be the problem?
I think it would be just a, it would be confusing for everybody.
I mean, they're two independent communities. I think that, that may be the case. But I don't think it should change the committee's decision on what it thinks is right for the Southborough community. From, I think the question we asked from the medical advisory team, you know, is it, will students masking choice? Will students be safer waiting two days than lifting the mask mandate tomorrow? And that's, we did discuss that as a medical advisory team. So I'd love to have staffed our comment on it. I think the question on the table for me is really operational. You know, just again, time for communication, having families have time to have conversations over the weekend. That is what the question is, I think, that is being considered with emotion, I believe.
And I, I don't believe that there's, you know, a, a health benefit. Our case numbers are so low at this point where we are. I, I don't think that from that perspective, you know, tomorrow or Monday would make a difference.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Greg, is, I'm sorry, so Jen, back to Jen.
I, I did want to point out the comment that, that there was some, I wouldn't say disagreement, but just differences in opinion from the medical advisory team. About an optimal start date with at, at least two, it sounded like preferring for a later, a slightly later start date to that.
No, one hundred percent said March third was okay. And. They're okay with March third, they thought for the community, one person thought for the community who was more hesitant to remove masks. Or who wanted to keep masks. It would, March seventh would give them a little bit more time to prepare. And the, and the other person was, March third was okay. Because our numbers were still less than that percent, that number per a hundred thousand per day. So I think that, and, but theirs was personally, they would wait till the fourteenth. So they would advise their own children, if they have them, to mask until the fourteenth. For reasons that, but professionally infectious is by medical personnel. They all agreed that March third was okay.
Katara?
So I, yeah, I was going to ask the same question about whether there's any health benefit to waiting until Monday. And if there really isn't, I still would be in favor of the March third date. I, and, and I mean, this is anecdotal, but I, I have heard that, I know the teacher and Greg mentioned it too, that the teachers have been preparing students. I, I truly think this has been discussed a lot in the community. And it's, I, I really don't think it's going to take anyone by much surprise if it happened tomorrow, so.
Thanks, Saf, I could probably add on to this, but in the grand scheme of things, March third to March seventh would make no difference.
I agree, I think is those discussions have happened, you know, we certainly had given more time. It sounds like those discussions have happened, the discussions that we wanted, you know, for children who wear masks to feel comfortable still wearing them. Once we do go mask optional.
Kamali?
Um, yeah, I was just going to say that that was helpful to hear, that kind of feedback. And I'm not opposed to the March third start. And I'm trying to like, you know, find a balance between those that want to start on, you know, the third. And I'm, when I say those, I mean, community and medical and administrators, everybody, like the, the whole collective. That there's probably more room for those to stretch to the seventh. Than the reverse, which is those that really can't, just, just do not feel comfortable with. Don't agree with the, you know, pick the item that you want. Don't agree with, you know, one point or another to come towards us, to, towards starting on the third. And so. I don't know if maybe Katara, you could help me to, you know, maybe unprove that case. Or like, tell me like, that's really not one way to look at it. I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm really impacted by your comment, Saf, there and Mary Ellen, we said that it's not really any medical benefit. Or quantitative, you know, benefit between the, the third and the seven. So I'm, I'm now on the fence.
I can, I, Greg, did you have something to say? I'm happy to let Greg.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, timing any of these decisions is really difficult. That I think, you know, C D C's announcement on, you know, Friday, you know, I know people who are critical of, of that, that announcement. And when it took place, there's been, people have been critical about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's timing of February twenty eighth. I don't think there's any, there's any perfect window of time. That is, you know, where masks are lifted or not. I do, we'll share that, you know, throughout this pandemic, we, we have had families care a great deal about their children's safety. And health and safety. And on both ends of the continuum, you know, we've heard parents care very loudly about not wearing masks. And we've heard families care very loudly about wearing masks. And I don't think there is a, a perfect answer. And regardless of the date, there's going to be a contingency of people who just aren't going to agree. Which is part of the process and decision-making that we've all been involved in. Around many decisions that we make as a committee and as a superintendent. So those are just some general comments that I wanted to, to make.
I thought Jen had her, there she is. So Kamali, did you have a follow-on to that? Or shall I, all right, Kim, I'm sorry, Jen?
I'm just going to state my personal preference. I think having spoken to quite a few parents and hearing the feedback is, I would prefer it to start on Monday. As opposed to announcing it today and having some kids that are already possibly in bed. Some who parents have been planning trips over the weekend, but might have vulnerable family members. I think that those are some, I agree with removing, you know, removing the mandate. I think based on all the data that we're saying, I do think that given the amount of feedback I've heard from concerned parents. The extra two days to prepare is probably useful. So that's just my own opinion, I could be swayed on that. But I think it's, it would be kind of a compromise for those who are anxious about it.
Kim?
I kind, I agree with Jen, she basically just stated what I think. I think that the two extra days is a nice compromise.
Greg, I'm, I'm going to presume, and I know that, I know that the, look, we are two separate committees, two separate communities. And, you know, we're not always going to make the same decisions. It sounds like operationally, it's not optimum, but it, but it's doable. Is that what I heard you say? If the seventh were to be the date that the committee voted?
Yes, I mean, I think that the policy is, is identical, that's the key. The start date, you know, that is at the will of the committee. I will share that I do stand by the March third start date. You know, I think, again, there's no perfect start time. And do stand by, you know, removing or making masking a choice as soon as possible. And that's, Roger, you had mentioned, you know, that was some of your thought process around. Students and families still can choose to bring, have their kids wear masks tomorrow.
True.
And wait till the weekend to have conversations. So I guess my recommendation still stands around March third and, but, you know, I'm, my responsibility is to. Implement the will of the committee and, and the vote of the committee and I, I will respect and implement whatever the committee decides.
And we'll, we'll, whatever the committee decides, will Northborough be able to be aware of that, at least in their meeting?
Yes, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's fairly irrelevant too. I mean, I think we're, although. You know, we're one community of learners when it comes to many of the things we do. Decisions such as this need to be right for each of the communities and, you know, a couple of days is not going to challenge us. As an operational. You know, leadership team.
I agree, but I, I think if it were reversed, I'd want to know if I were.
Yeah, I can, I can notify there in the next other room, so.
Katura?
So I was just gonna. Sort of similarly, Greg, just put in one more plug for having the start date tomorrow. You know, I'm not going to say that a couple of days is gonna. Make all the difference in the world. I mean, we've been going through this for so long. I, I, you know, and I've been very. You know. Pro mask and we, you know, we did, we did a lot of masking, you know, I've, I've never had a problem with it. I'm not, this is not, but I. I just feel like we're at this point in time where it's possible to just. Keep, keep moving back toward normalcy and. And I, you know, it feels like a little bit of a missed opportunity to, to delay it. But, you know, again. I'm not going to say it's, you know, the end of the world to wait a few more days. But, and I, and I know there are, there are families who. Are really. Sort of. You know, concerned about the optional masking going into place. I also know that there are a lot of families who have, you know, really have. Had, you know, a, a difficult time with the masking and. Have been cooperating this entire time. And I just, you know, I just think that. If it's possible to do it, we should do it. But. Again, I'm not saying it's the end of the world if we wait a couple of days. It's, I just. Would have been in favor of tomorrow, so.
Kamali? Where? Okay, so hand down. All right, other comments?
Roger, can I just say?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. As Mr. Martino said, you know, like the timing of the C D C. Mask recommendations. Was not ideal. If we had had this information on February seventeenth. Would we have made a different recommendation at that time? Most likely, we would have recommended February twenty eighth for all the schools. So. I just think that we need to. As with everything, we've needed to shift and we've needed to be fluid with our decisions and use the information that we have. To make the best decision possible.
Kamali?
I am, I'm going to agree with Katura that. To take the opportunity to start, to propose starting on third.
Well, there's, there's a couple of possibilities. You can withdraw the amendment because you made the amendment. Or, and is that what you'd like to do?
Yes.
All right, so. We go back to the main motion. And the main motion is to amend the start date. From the fourteenth until the third. That was moved by Katura and seconded by Roger. This would be a roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that carries unanimously. I thank everybody for this and. Any, any comments from? Anyone at this point, or we will adjourn the meeting? I know that. The district has another meeting to get to. All right. I, I should mention that I forgot at the very beginning of the meeting to identify that. We were, the, the participants in the meeting. And I think that everyone. Was here at five thirty. Kamali may have been here a minute or so after that, but that we do have everybody in attendance at the meeting tonight, which is. Obviously. Which is obvious. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going with Kim.
Moved by Kim. Is there a second?
Second, Kamali.
Seconded by Kamali. Roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. It is six forty seven. Sorry that you'd be a little late to Northborough, but thank you very much for, for letting us. Letting us do this this evening. And we are adjourned.